Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Burwick Planning Board. It's a regular meeting for Thursday, December 6th, 2018. If we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Planning Board members present tonight. Regular members Sean Winston, Niall Shore, the Vice Chair, Paul Bovere, and alternate Mike LaRue. Absent tonight is Nicole Fecto, so Mike will be voting tonight. Also, we have our Town Planner, and we have our Code Enforcement Officer, and many members of the public in attendance tonight. I'd like to open Public Comments Session. It's open to any resident or property owner in the town of Burwick to come forward and talk about anything that relates to the Planning Board. So, Public Comments Session is open. Feel free to come to the podium. We also have another opportunity at the end of the meeting to come up for another Public Comments Session. You should come to the podium, sure, for our viewers at home. If you could just state your name and your address.
Manley Gove, 120 Dennett Road, South Burwick. And my question is...
So, here's you're in South Burwick?
That's right.
Okay, so we have to make an exception to the rules here? What's... What do you... Because it's open... Any... Do you own any property in Burwick?
I sure do, yeah.
What's that property?
It's two... I think it's 544 Portland Street in Burwick.
Okay.
My question is, will there be an opportunity to speak to the things that are before the Board this evening?
Such as?
The plant that's going to be put in this evening.
This is a... This is the first time that they've come before the Board, so we'll have an opportunity at the end of Public Comments Session to ask questions as well and get back to that. And then we'll have a public hearing if it moves forward, if the application moves forward.
In a public hearing, that won't be tonight?
It will definitely not be tonight. The application is just before the Board now. It has to go through application approval for... Or preliminary approval first, or application completeness, I'm sorry. So, what were your concerns about that application?
I'd rather see what they're going to present than I can tell you what my concerns are.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anybody else for Public Comments Session? Going once, going twice? Close the Public Comments Session, moving on to the Approval of Minutes for the November 1st, 2018 Meeting. I will abstain from voting on this since I was not present for that. I don't see anything red on yours. No red pen?
Or blue.
No red or no blue?
No, I read them, but because we canceled our meeting, I have to refresh my memory.
I think it's all right.
Yeah, I didn't see anything.
I move that we adopt the minutes as written.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor signify by raising your hands. Okay, that's four, and then all abstain, so that's four, nothing with one abstaining. Moving on to new business, conditional use application, industrial use, six industry drive aquifer protection zone, Northeast Ready Mix. We'll start off with our Town Planner, Mr. Town Planner.
Good evening, Board Members, how are you? Yes, so this application is proposing to construct a 24 by 60... Oh, that's my old one, excuse me. That's from the other project. Northeast Ready Mix is seeking approval to construct a new concrete batch plant on Lot 5 of the MIC construction subdivision. This project is located in the Rural Commercial Industrial Zone and the Aquifer Protection Zones. As I indicate in my memo, from my perspective, the use is an industrial use and not recognized as a permitted or conditional use in the AP Zone. I'm not sure how...
Can I suggest we deal with this issue of whether there's agreement about it being in the aquifer protection? Because if there is, I'm not sure we need to really go on.
Certainly.
So, is it possible to ask the applicants your view on this question about whether this is in the aquifer protection zone?
I think it goes a little deeper than that.
Let me just... Let's just have Lee J. finish, and then we can ask that question, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, I'll go on and talk about the project in case we do move beyond this issue. But as part of the project, the site will consist of a 600 square foot office, stone sand storage area near the proposed ramp, and mixing plant. There is an unidentified designation on the plan, which the applicant will need to identify, in area located on the plan without a note on it. Fifteen parking spaces are proposed on site to serve employees of the facility. However, there is no designated truck parking. Where on the site will trucks be stored? We're not in use. My concern with that is are they going to be on a concrete pad area or a paved area or something that would be further protection from any oil spills or gasoline spillage? Note 15 of the plan indicates that the project is subject to main DEP. I've issued... I've shown the license number there from July of 2006. In particular, a need for an SPCC plan, which has been submitted as part of the review, that spill protection and spill protection can... Spill protection plan, excuse me. The applicant should indicate the amount... As a follow-up to the discussion, the applicant has not provided a stormwater analysis as part of the submission, which there are a number of pieces of information missing, 9.8 F2, which needs to have waivers associated with them, and not going to submit the information. The waivers should include a statement of justification as to why they are not proposing to submit the information. As part of the stormwater analysis, the applicant proposes to put water into the town of South Burwick through a drainage way that was previously approved as the... When the subdivision was originally approved in 2006. Other issues, the property is located, as I mentioned, in the aquifer protection overlay zone. There is nothing in the design of this application that would suggest is being designed to a higher standard for protection of the aquifer. The location is also shown on the beginning with habitat maps with an area for designated as a black racer snakes, which is identified as an endangered species. I did not further pursue that. I'm not sure how or what we could do about that, but it is shown as a habitat area for the black racer. Recommendation on this application is that this use is an industrial use, according to my interpretation, recognized as a permitted or can not recognized as a permitted or conditional use in the AP Zone. I'm not sure how when the previous use was permitted on the property just in front of this one, but I cannot recommend that this project proceed until the zoning matter has been addressed. It is a little deeper than, you know, is it in the AP Zone or not? I think there's also, I've had several discussions with representative for the applicant about how it's defined, whether it's industrial or a concrete batching plant. It's fairly complicated, actually, in my estimation, but I have given you the surface coverage of my interpretation of the ordinance.
How is it complicated?
Well, it's complicated. It's complicated because the zoning ordinance, again, we've had several discussions about this, so I'm going to try to be as fair as I can on the interpretation of it. But the zoning ordinance has a definition of mineral extraction, which this is not. And get myself to...
What is this considered?
Well, that's part of the issue.
Industrial?
That's part of the issue. So, there's mineral exploration and mineral extraction. It does not meet either one of those definitions. However, in the ordinance, there's also a set of performance standards that you have under mineral industry. And mineral industry talks about topsoil, rock, sand, gravel, and similar earth materials may be removed from locations where permitted under the terms of this ordinance only after conditional use permit. I interpret that as an extraction operation. The top of page 92, within the mineral industry section, it also says, "All other earth-moving, processing, and storage shall require conditional use approval from the Planning Board." But you look at the chart of uses, your table of uses, and under industrial, we have mineral industry and mineral extraction. But again, under mineral industry, there's no definition. The only thing we have to go on is the performance standards found on page 91 and 92. So, it's very difficult to try and interpret how this is. Now, I pulled out a report that I did for you folks on the Ready Mix operation across the street from last year when they did their expansion and they were in front of us. And the second sentence in my memo says this property is located in the RCI Zone and the use is categorized as industrial. That's what I went on when I looked at the zoning ordinance in relation to this project, and that's how I've kind of come to my full conclusion, because it is not real clear in the ordinance how to categorize this use. The thing that makes it more difficult is the AP Zone.
Okay. I'd like to ask the applicant to come on up.
Hi, everyone. I'm Brad Moore, and I'm an attorney for Northeast Ready Mix. Lou is going to address the details of the application, but the client asked me to deal primarily with the whole use issue. I prepared a memo. Did the Board members get a copy of that and a chance to look at it?
So, James didn't provide that? I don't have it.
I have extra copies of it right now. I think, why don't I share that, only because it's got... I should sit here. Points I wanted to make. Okay. Just a couple of points I'd like to make at the beginning. The AP Zone, I would argue, makes a difference in terms of when you're looking at conditions, but in terms of whether it's allowable use, it doesn't change much of anything, because in RCI and AP, mineral industry is allowed with a conditional use in both of those zones. The Ready Mix operation, they're already in operation. They have the portable concrete... It's a, from what I understand, portable concrete batch plant. They mix sand, gravel, and cement together and put it into the trucks. They're already in operation in the RC Zone, and as noted in the memo, the Planning Board approved that in 2015. They're on Mr. Gove, who was just up here, they're on his property right now, under a lease. So, when they went onto that property, the Planning Board did a conditional use review at that time and made findings of fact. And in there, they made a finding of the Board, actually, a lot of the same members on the Board here, made a finding that this concrete production that they're doing was mineral industry. And there's also a finding that Article 6 of the Burwick Land Use Ordinance permits mineral industries as a conditional use in the RCI zoning district, subject to all the standards. That was in 2015. The current ordinance hasn't changed. On the second page of the memo I've got in here shows where mineral industry is C, so conditional, in both the RCI and the AP Zone.
Let me just stop you. What is... They're making concrete. How are they making the concrete? Where are they getting the materials to make the concrete?
You guys jump in if I get anything wrong here, because it's not what I do. They bring in sand, they bring in gravel, correct?
No, sand, stone that's been processed, it all comes from Pike and Wells. Our sand comes from Alfred.
Let me just turn that microphone over towards him, please. Sorry, we have people watch at home.
No, that's fine. The... Every... All the ingredients for, you know, what we do, I trucked in. The stone comes from Pike and Wells. Our sand comes from a pit in Alfred. Cement, most of it comes from Tomaston. And, you know, we're not mining there, we're not... We're not manufacturing concrete there, the trucks are the manufacturing plant. All we're doing is weighing.
So, where's the mineral extraction?
There is no mineral extraction there. We truck everything in, you know, for the concrete.
What there would be, I would argue, I mean, there's processing, processing sand, rock, and then it gets weighed out in the correct proportions.
There's really not any processing, because that's in the definition of what we're talking about here.
But we could, we could bring raw sand and screen it.
Yeah, the screen it if we wanted to, yeah. But right now, we don't. It's... All that plant does is weigh the different ingredients and transfer them to the truck.
Where's the mineral industry?
Okay. So, your ordinance doesn't define mineral industry, but not everything has to be defined. And I'd like, if I can...
I think you're wrong there, sir. But go on.
If I can just be hard, I can go through the ordinance that we can talk about. On Section 2.1, it says, of your ordinance on page two, it says that if it's not defined specifically, then we give it its ordinary meaning from its context, and ordinary meaning including dictionary meanings, okay? Mineral industry does not appear in your definitions. Industry appears in your definitions in terms of processing goods, okay? Mineral extraction does appear in there, okay? Now, mineral extraction lists in there on page 16, sand and gravel as part of the activities involving mineral extraction. The only reason I'm pointing that out is because when you're looking about, well, what is a mineral industry? You can look in the context of your ordinance and see what's in there, and mineral extraction includes sand and gravel. So, we have an industry...
Extracting it from the site.
That's right, and I'm not saying this isn't mineral extraction. Actually, it's less, certainly less impactful than mineral extraction. But you have a general definition of industry, and then you have mineral basically as a modifier, and we know that sand and gravel, under your ordinance, and looking at the context, which our ordinance tells us to do, includes those fall under minerals. You also have a section, okay? You also have a section in Section 8.10, and that's the one that Lee J. and I had discussed, which talks about mineral performance standards for mineral industry. So, mineral industry is recognized as something there, and it's not just extraction, because they don't say the performance standards for mineral extraction, it says mineral industry. And it has in there plenty of specific items dealing with extraction, but then there is a section that talks in there about storage or processing of minerals as allowed by the Planning Board. So, it contemplates that there are other activities involving minerals that would be industry, but they're mineral industry that are allowed, okay? And then finally, we've got the table itself. The table itself... The one thing I just have to disagree with Lee J., where he said, like, the only thing where we go on is this 8.10, and it's kind of muddled. You can't ignore the table itself. The table itself says mineral industry is allowed here with conditional use. Now, and then if you want even further, there's also, at the beginning of your table, on page 33612, it talks about the inherent authority of the town to find if something is similar to a use put on there, that they can make a determination that it fits into that category. It says the only time that you would find out that it's totally prohibited, because it wasn't defined, would be as if it couldn't reasonably construed as one of those things. That's on page 33.
As I read it, it says the Code Enforcement Officer...
Yeah, that one does say, yeah, it says the Code Enforcement Officer.
Sure does. So, I'd like to ask the Code Enforcement Officer your opinion on all of this.
Dan Vincent, building official. I would say that if it's over the aquifer protection, that we should protect the aquifer that we got in this plan.
Well, we can get to that, but the question right now is, what is the use here? Is this industrial? Is it mineral industrial? Is it an omitted use? And if it is, what do you think it's closest to?
I'm going to let the Planner speak to that if I could.
No, but under the ordinance, you have to speak to it.
Well, then I would have to study that more than what I have.
All right, and I think you should have the time to do that.
This evening?
No, obviously, you can't decide it this evening, but we need to hear from you under the ordinance.
Then you will.
Could I make just a couple of points on that, sir, too? I don't think you even need to reach that point, only because of the plain language of the ordinance. I'm just saying that's the catch-all that a lot of land use ordinances have, which is to give this kind of inherent authority that, like, some of the books we have, they talk about the similar use exception. I'm saying, on behalf of them, I don't think you even need to reach that, only because of everything else we've got in here. When the courts...
I'm saying, as a member of the Planning Board, I disagree with you, and I want to hear from him.
Absolutely. But I'm just saying that from a legal perspective, I don't think, you know, if I was arguing this in court, I would say, this is my secondary argument. Judge, I don't think you even need to reach that, because you can make a finding based on this. A couple of other things I'll point out. Again, you know, this is stuff we argue in front of judges all the time, but I'm just going to point out... More general descriptions of things, whether it's in a statute ordinance case or whatever, they tend to yield to more specific things. So, industrial and mineral industry, industrial is general, mineral industry is specific. So, if this could fit into mineral industry, you should find that that's the category it goes in. It doesn't go into industrial, which would make sense, because when persons are creating this table in the zoning ordinance, they're saying, all right, we want this, we want this, we want this, we want this. If it's another industrial use, that's a generic one, then we're going to exit out in this particular district. The other thing that we try to do, at least the courts try to do whenever they get anything like this, is they try to avoid invalidating parts of the ordinances or making them, what do they call, superfluous.
Superfluous?
Superfluous, unnecessary, okay? So, if mineral industry only included extraction or the other one that fits in there, exploration, if it was only mineral extraction, and if it was only mineral... What did I just say it was? Mineral extraction and mineral investigation. No, the exploration. If it was only those two, you'd have no need for another thing for mineral industry. You'd have no need for that appearing on the table. So, that's just, those are legal constructs, and I think they really make sense in this case. Couple other things, other points. Obviously, if the Board agrees with us here, you're just affirming what you've already done. In 2015, this Board determined my client's activity was mineral industry. So, by doing this, you're not really departing from anything. Matter of fact, by going the other way, I would say you're veering off on a different path. As Mr. Feldman had pointed out, someone was approved for this very same thing in the same zone. And then my client's operation...
It was in a different zone, it was in the RCI.
Yeah, the only thing I point out...
They were approved for, yes, they were approved.
They're both RCI, and actually, I think that one's also...
But one's in the AP.
Yeah, the AP makes a difference here.
Yeah.
We keep ignoring that, but it's a very important issue here.
I would argue that the AP makes a difference in your review of the substance of what they're doing, but in terms of defining the use, it doesn't make a difference, right? Because if I was coming...
No, but whether or not it's an allowed use, the table would tell us that an industrial use, if that is the proper term, is not allowed in the AP. A mineral industrial may be, but not an industrial, so it matters in all the world.
That's right. And, no, I don't disagree with you.
What you're saying...
The table says I is not allowed.
What you're saying is, back in 2015, this application was approved at a different site in the RCI, not in the AP, for mineral industry. Now, if you look, mineral industry is conditional use in the AP. So, what you're saying is that because this application was approved back in 2015, whether or not it was right or wrong, it was considered mineral industry, and therefore, it should be allowed to move forward in the AP under a conditional use application.
I would say, first of all, I would say it was right. And what I'm saying is, I'm trying to divorce the issue in terms of what is the use from... Obviously, the AP Zone's going to get heightened protections, but that doesn't change about whether it's C, whether it is the conditional use, because it is, it's very clear that mineral industry is allowed with a conditional use in the AP.
That's what I just said.
Yeah.
Why don't we hear from Dan?
Dan?
Yeah. One other thing real quick.
Hold on a second, Dan, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, if I could give these to the members, the difficulty of trying to find definitions, we access this through a government website, standard definitions.
Dan, make sure he gets a...
Yeah, portions of it.
This is mineral mining industry.
I think we're interested in this paragraph.
But this isn't in our land use.
No, but our ordinance instructs him to do exactly what he's doing here.
Google, he Googled it looking for a definition as the ordinance requires, and what we found was that.
I think you'd be interested in the third paragraph.
So, what you're saying, this does not include establishments engaged in manufacturing cement or lime, engaged in cutting and finishing stone, are those engaged in... Okay.
Could you read that to us?
Sure. Actually, why don't I have, Dan, why don't you go ahead and explain what this is?
This is a... We didn't have the definitions, obviously, that are part of the confusion here this evening on determining what is the mining industry, what is a mineral industry. We didn't completely have those definitions in our zoning ordinance. So, I went to the website, which, a government website, which provided us with the mining industry categories, and looking at the non-metallic mineral mining industry, I felt that this paragraph dealt with this evening's presentation request. Section 3 is non-metallic mineral mining industry. All establishments primarily engage in mining or quarrying, developing mines or exploring for non-metallic minerals except fuels. This also includes certain well or brine operations and primary preparation plants, such as those engaged in crushing, grinding, washing, or other concentrations. This does not include establishments engaged in the manufacturing of cement or lime, engaged in cutting and finishing stone, or those engaged in manufacturing brick and other structural clay products. Definitions they had in that was standard industrial manufacturing of stone, clay, glass, and concrete products. Definition source was the standard industrial classifications. So, not having that definition in our zoning, I think that this would fall into that definition that we might use for mineral mining industry. And specifically, as it relates to the cement, I guess that paragraph would put us into this evening's conversation.
Have you heard on that, just real quick? It talks about mining industries.
If you could just stand by the microphone. Sorry, we have a lot of people who watch us at home.
It talks about mining, it says non-metallic mineral mining industries, and then it says this is what you, this is what they are, and then it says this is what they are not, manufacturing cement. That's not a mining industry. We're not... I don't think, respectfully, I don't think this sheds light on anything, because it says... We're not, I don't, I don't think, respectfully, I don't think this sheds light on anything because it says, here's how you define a mining industry under, under this standard, and manufacturing cement is not a mining industry. Everyone agrees, we're not talking about a mining industry here. So it doesn't, this doesn't really establish that cement, that the processing that they're talking about, the mixing of the sand and, and, and the assembling of, the weighing of sand, the stockpiling of sand and gravel, that that is not a mineral industry. Again, remember, your own ordinance says sand, gravel, they fall into that mineral category for mineral extraction.
Paul, what do you got?
Well, I'm, this, this, we need to study this. I have a couple of questions besides what we're talking about right now. But I'm reading the third paragraph that we were just handed, and it's non-metallic mining, mining industry. And I think we're kind of honing on this definition. This mining industry definition, and I'll read it. This does not include establishments engaged in manufacturing cement or lime, engaged in cutting or finishing stone, or engage in manufacturing brick and other structural clay products. See, manufacturing for concrete products. So it's actually, to me, we're talking about a manufacturing of a concrete product. You're mixing a bunch of aggregates and you're manufacturing a concrete product. It is not actually mining. You're not mining, we know that. You're not taking anything out of the ground.
I agree with that. Yep.
And we, our definition possibly lacks, you know, you know, the granularity that we need to, to figure this out. The other question is, do we know exactly where the aquifer protection boundaries are? Because I don't believe that whole area, which is getting fairly industrialized, has.
According to the map, it's pretty much.
According to the map, it is. If you look, even the.
But has that been done with a high intensity or with aerial or?
That information comes from state main geological survey.
And what's the granularity of that?
Well, I don't know.
Sure.
We've never done a high-intensity hydro in there, as far as I know.
I require him to do it.
Every time it rains, we're flooding. There's no place to drain it.
Probably not, no.
What's this, where did you get this over, Larry?
I wasn't here in two thousand and five. I don't know what they.
I'm saying, they approved it, not on it.
Do we have both where he is situated now and where we're going?
So are you on Stone Lane or are you on?
Industry.
Industry. Well, industry, according to the map that we have, the GIS that we have, it shows it right on there.
Yeah.
In the AP.
And he is right, right here on this line right here, Dave.
Where you're going to go, where you currently are now, you're, you're not in AP.
Yeah, right on the edge.
You want to come on up?
But it's hard. It's way from there, but it don't go like straight down into the aquifer.
All right. Lee J, what do you? Yes. I see you over there. You know, this, this is a very complex issue, and I think that. Just a sec, just a second. This is, this is a very, very complex issue. First of all, does, does anybody else on the board have any, any questions right now that might shed some light on, on anything?
Well, I just want to know from Dan. The, the ordinance says that you're supposed to look at the North American industrial classification. Is that this? Is that what this is?
You see on the bottom, left-hand corner, is where this website provisionager.
I have that here.
Let me find it, what I'm talking about.
I'm not necessarily, I appreciate that.
The source is the standard industrial classification.
Oh, it is, okay.
So this is the North American industry classification system? Okay, good. That, that matters.
So I think probably that this is a very complex issue. What Dan and I could do in the near future would be to, for, for your benefit, would be to have a conference call or a call with the town's attorney to see where they fall with this whole definition and how they would interpret it for us going forward before any decisions are made. I mean, I, I'm just trying to interpret the ordinance as what's in front of us, and I'm having a very difficult time. It's not like it's, you know, like you say, it's, I don't know, a warehouse. And you look at zoning ordinance and it says warehouses allowed. It's not that clear. Furthermore, if we get to that point, and I don't want to dive into detailed discussion, I think there's going to need to be a lot more information required of the applicant if this does move forward in the AP zone.
Absolutely.
And I'd be happy to discuss that with the applicant's representative when we're done. But, I mean, I think that the first thing we need to do is probably talk with the town's attorney and see how he falls on this.
How soon can we do that?
I'd have to find out with him what his availability is, and then probably early next week.
I, I think we just, for me, I, we need a very clear answer. I think it's really outside of our pay grade right now because it's, it's, it's not crystal clear. I, I would like to see something from the town attorney, one way or another, that we can act on, that we, because this can go either way. We approve it or we don't approve it. Either way, this can get very sticky.
Yep.
Lee J, I would request, when you talk to the town's attorney, you ask him essentially the following question. Is this more like mineral manufacturing or is this more like mineral mining?
Not trying to be difficult.
No, no, we understand.
We're trying to be prudent for you and for everybody else in town.
We understand that. And I think in.
We're not trying to make you spend more money on a lawyer, so.
I'm pretty sure in this, in this same website, because I think it's in the, I think it's actually noted to, to check into that. Ready-mixed concrete should be looked up, like transit mix concrete. That's where the manufacturing is done. This batch plant does not manufacture anything.
Supportable plant.
Yep. All it does is weigh, transfers to the truck. And it, and it, and if, if, if you look under the definition of industry, I'm pretty sure it says manufacturing. You know, we're not manufacturing anything there.
Can you make sure that that's crystal clear to the town planner when he talks to the attorney, that this is exactly, I mean.
Yes, absolutely.
But call, call it a batch plant. Call it, I mean, the, the material comes in, makes with water.
You also may want to ask, is this mineral processing rather than mineral mining? Well, this is processing, right?
Well, well.
You don't think this is processing?
This is where it's going.
We don't think so. Everything that we bring.
What do you think it is?
Everything that we bring in is already processed.
So what do you think is going on there?
Wait, you're not mixing anything. You're bringing in con- concrete that's already made.
No, 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 no. We're bringing in aggregate, stone, sand, cement, that are all processed somewhere else.
Within the truck.
No, no, they're all processed somewhere else. So the batch plant, we, we, we have a bin for sand, a bin for the stone, a silo for the cement. The plant weighs that, you know, we have to weigh two certain specifications, you know, yardage plus what mix we're making. The batch plant weighs the different ingredients, transfers it to the trucks.
And then, and then you mix it in the truck.
In the trucks.
So here's your definition of industry in the zoning ordinance. The assembling, fabrication, finishing, manufacturing, packaging, or processing of goods or the extraction of minerals. These activities do not meet the definition of low-impact industry. That's the definition of an industry in this town. So you're either assembling, putting your waters and your stones and everything together in the truck, fabricating, packaging, or processing. You got to be doing one of those things to get to what they're, have for a finished product. And it goes on to say, or the processing of goods or the extraction of minerals. That is an industry.
But the question is, how is mining industrial or mineral industrial different than just regular industrial? And that's what we need the town attorney to tell us.
Understood.
Thank you.
Why would you want an industrial park if you can't have an industry here?
It's not up to us what we want. It's up to what's here, and it's up to protect the town. It's also up to protect you. I'm not trying, we're not trying to make things more difficult. We're just trying to do things the right way.
Exactly.
But how many plants have you approved over there over the years?
Because they haven't been in the, they haven't been in the AP. That's the reason why.
That's where we differ. That plant across Route Four is on the aquifer.
I used to own that plant, and I know it was.
I'd have to look at that. When was this approved?
He's got it right here.
I don't know which plant you're talking about.
The ready-mix plant.
Lee J, is the AP well-defined?
You're talking about in two thousand and fifteen.
Can I come over and look?
You're talking about in two thousand and fifteen. You're talking about up here.
That was over here.
Yeah, where we are now is on the AP.
Figure out.
How do we define?
And I know it's on the aquifer. Yeah, we ain't trying to, we're just trying to.
No, I understand that, yeah. And I'm just, we're just trying to do the right thing for you and for.
It's on the aquifer.
Because our.
We can find something for everything.
The delineation of the zone, the aquifer zone, cover the whole aquifer.
But it covers industrial.
Yeah.
It covers this road.
Understood. Short of doing that and having someone pay for that, this is what we have. That's what I'm saying.
But if they can show us, then on the AP.
Right. Phil Sossier.
Not sure who it is now.
Understood. Vernsey Shore. That's why I think there's.
Lee J, who's the town attorney now?
The whole, the whole lot that, that we want to move on to is not in the AP. You know, the whole of it.
Part of it is.
Part of it is.
Part of it is. And the one you're moving from is right on the edge.
Is, is on the.
On the edge.
No, no, it's.
What I'm saying is, some of these maps are done with aerial topography.
Yep.
They're not done with a high-intensity hydro study.
Drilling or whatever.
Which means drilling, finding out exactly what you've got below the source.
This is the engineer here. How about we let him present his findings?
Well, I mean, e- either way, I, I don't, I don't, I'd love to hear the findings, but I, I think we've kind of come to a standstill right now, whether or not. Tonight, we, we weren't, we weren't discussing, we were discussing whether or not the application was complete to move forward.
Correct.
That's what we were discussing tonight. We weren't going in any other details. And the first thing that we had to figure out was whether or not this application even met the requirements.
That's right. And, and in doing that, my memo was set up with the assumption that you may look at me and say, you're crazy. You know, we're going to move forward with it. I think we've seen that the issue is, is, pun intended, muddy enough that we need to get some better clarification. I mean, I think the best action for you tonight on this would be just to table the action on it or postpone action on it. And Dan and I get with Phil Sossier and have him tell us.
Here's another, here's another question, too. Why was this applica, with, with all this doubt? Why was the application allowed to even be put on the agenda initially? Because say, say I come forward and I want to build a farm downtown.
Yep. Yep.
Somebody in the planning office is going to tell me, no, you can't do this. Use your application and your money. Go home.
Yep. I think part of it is, part of it was just the, the timing and communications between James and I.
Okay.
Can I just say two things before we close? I know you're going to seek the town attorney's opinion. I'm going to have my client. I'm going to ask you just to prove it based on the information that we submitted that I think shows that it is mineral, mineral industry. If you have any doubts, seek the town, uh, town attorney's opinion, but we would, we would like to be able to move forward to get into the review of the merits on that. And then the second thing would be, I don't know about for tonight's meeting, what your plan is, there was a reference to having some comment about it. Would like an opportunity to respond to anything if there's some comments made about this particular application? And are you planning to do that at the end of the next?
The public comment session.
Yeah, so I guess we'll have to stick around then if we could have a chance to rebut anything.
This is, it's not a public hearing tonight. I mean, there's a formality to the meetings.
No, but I know Mr. Gold wants to talk about our application. So if you're going to, I mean, if you want to take him out of order and we can hear what he has to say, we can respond, then maybe we can.
I think we should wait till the public comment.
The public comment is, comes near the end of the process, and we've got another applicant who'd like to be heard, I'm sure.
You guys had anything else you want to say?
Transit mix. It was from, I think, it was from the same thing that's referenced here.
If I could, I'm going to look for something in my file that Charlie wanted me to give you that talks about the, the transit mix. He's getting something in there. It'd just take me a second to find it.
I'm pretty sure it came from the same.
Well, we have another applicant. Help.
Oh, that's fine. No.
I can just hand it out, just make it part of the record.
But, no, we're, we're getting, we're going to get out of order here. I mean, there's a, there's a formality to the meetings here, so we're still discussing this application right now. Once we move on, I mean, then we're going to have to just end it at that point. Lee J, you'll make that phone call tomorrow?
Yes, of course.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. As soon as we can get to talk with him regarding.
Could you ask him to put something in writing so that we can review it?
Oh, absolutely. I would expect him to provide us something in writing on this.
Thank you.
Hopefully I can come back and apologize for being wrong with it, so, I mean, I, you know, it's very confusing.
I don't think you were wrong. No, you, you raise an important issue and we'll get it resolved. It wasn't a question of right or wrong. We need to get an answer, and you pointed that out, and you were absolutely right.
Certainly anything that you have, just, just give to Lee J so we can get to the town attorney so they can make the decision, too.
You know, I applied back a little bit with the first meeting, and I had to pull a hair off to get that. I went to Joe Rose, who had the power, asked him about the move. He said, no problem at all. Just scratch up something simple. Got to go in front of the board, but eh, no big deal. It's nothing, you know? And now it's America, sure, ain't it?
This is the first that we saw the application. This is the first that it's come from the town.
He said it from my.
Uh, no, I have not.
The, the ordinance hasn't changed since April, so whether we saw it in April or tonight, it's still the same issue.
Right. But why would, why would it take this long?
That I can't imagine, yeah.
It, you know, it, it took this long, I, I hate to go down this road. I really do. It took this long because the first application that was submitted was very insufficient to put in front of you, period. There was no plan. There was no information. There was nothing. I called the applicant's support secretary, whoever it might have been, and said, I need a plan. I need additional information. It took this long to get that information. We process our applications, as you know. When they come in, they get to you folks. We don't hold anything back.
I think they were trying to do it on their own.
Okay. Well, now that they have you, you now saw, are we ready to move on to the next application?
We could have done it on our own. There was nothing. We thought we had to just scratch up something on paper and present.
Well, if you have any uncertainty about things, please come to the planning board during the meetings and bring them up, and then we can ask questions of the town staff of why things are taking so long.
I didn't know I could.
Of course, anybody, that's why we have public comment sessions. So if you're not getting the answers that you want from, from town staff, you come to the planning board meeting. The town staff's here. We'll ask them the questions and then we'll get the answers. So. Okay. Moving on to the new business sketch plan, Norman Court, R2 Zone, Paul Hollis, NC Berwick LLC is the applicant. Lee J.
Uh, yes, Norman Court, Paul Hollis, the developer, was before you folks, I'm going to say probably seven or eight months ago now. And unfortunately, because of the timing of that, the sketch that he had presented with you folks had, has technically lapsed. So Paul and I had discussed the application, and I think he wants to get moving on it, so we're starting back at scratch again.
By the way, we did have a sidewalk.
You did have a sidewalk because I, of course Kathy Connor had handled the project before me, and her notes suggested that you had not had one.
We definitely did.
That was probably two years ago, by the way, not six months.
Yeah, well, so that's a good thing. You've, you've done your sidewalk, but we're back at sketch level. Um, and hopefully we can get the application prepared for submittal at preliminary level within the six month period after this evening.
Hi, may I make a, just a handout?
Sure.
Thank you. How was that with you? Mr. Chairman, how were you, sir?
Good, good.
Move this a little? I have to speak at, uh.
You can turn it around.
Um, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Feldman. Uh, my name is Paul Hollis. I'm the owner of NC Berwick LLC and the owner of this land. I was, I was here in February, uh, presenting sketch, uh, with the intent to get right on to, um, uh, engineering and work that would be needed in order to present for preliminary. And, um, we got caught up in a few other projects. This got put on the back burner. Uh, back in the fall, we decided to revisit it and get it started again. And that's why we're here this evening. So, uh, I'm sorry that it's been such a lapse in between that, uh, thirty-two years I've ever had a lapse like this. But things came up this summer that I had to put this on the back burner and now I'm back here. Uh, what you have before you is probably a three or four year old picture of Norman Court, the entrance to Norman Court off of Old Pine Hill Road. Uh, there are four homes on the property, one, excuse me, servicing Norman Court presently, one, uh, two, three, four. Uh, there's a fifth house that's new. This one went in last year, right here at the corner. Uh, there's also this, um, auto repair shop, uh, that's right here. The parcel that we own is thirty-seven and a half acres, former Clement property. Uh, there's an existing eight hundred and eighty foot roadway that is there servicing those homes, uh, and servicing that business. Um, when we sat down and started to lay out, um, how many lots, a conventional subdivision, uh, on the subd- on, on the property, there was about forty-one lots. Then we, of course, we learned that the daily trips would negate us doing such as.
That's not the current one, right?
No.
Oh, we don't need to see that one.
Well.
That's, that's just very.
That's to go from the cluster.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, what's that?
This is a conventional.
Conventional.
But that's not the one that you're presenting.
No, I'm not.
No, but you need to have that as the basis for your cluster definition.
I don't, I just didn't, I didn't see this here and I was just like, that looks a lot different. What are you trying to?
Can you prove this right now for me?
As far as this proposal, you need to provide.
Not about proposal, I need to show a convention.
Is that the one that was going to go over to Halflinger?
Uh, this, this is not going over to Halflinger.
Okay.
This is, this is a conventional plan on the thirty-seven and a half acres.
Okay.
So, I put it up there because I'll be quiet.
What that is, there's just, there's clarity here. That plan is, if you were to push this to the limit, how many lots could you fit on this? That's what that is.
Thank you, sir. Wish I could do it, but I can't.
Now.
Here's the thirty-seven and a half acres. Throw all those lots on there that we presently own. Uh, the roadway is about eighty, eighty feet right now, it's existing data. Um, so that is the whole thirty-seven acre. Also has, I'm pretty sure we completed my corner poll survey. Then, as a result of the limitation of the daily trips is required, we have a sixteen lot subdivision. Um, there are two. Thank you very much. Can everyone hear me? Is this on?
Is this recording?
Is this recording? Okay, anyways. So, what we have, there's two brooks running through the property, Coffin Brook, Coffin Brook to the right here, Ferguson Brook over here. Uh, there is water and sewer on, um, Old Pine Hill Road. It's our intent to tap in, of course, into the water and sewer. We're in two different zones. We're in the R1 zone, the R2 zone, the lot line, the zoning line is right, right past Lot Two, right here. Uh, the R1, of course, allows ten thousand square feet. R2 is twenty thousand square feet. As a result of our cluster division, we're able to reduce our frontage and reduce our acreage. Uh, but all the setbacks, setbacks get reduced slightly. Uh, we have seventy-five foot setbacks from these brooks over here. We did do a site walk back in February. Uh, it was, it was the winter time.
It was the summer, was it?
No, I, I remember being cold.
In the summertime.
Yeah, I remember being there in the summertime.
Summer of two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen?
Seventeen.
Two thousand seventeen.
But.
It was fall.
Yeah. I think it was, it was before the snow came.
You just got on the planning board.
It was not snowing. I know that, there was no snow in the ground.
You were talking about soccer. Bicycle socks, there we go.
Okay. And, so, um, so, so here we are with the same sketch of sixteen lots. Now, in the last, uh, this summer and fall, we've done, uh, stormwater management design, water and sewer design, roadway design. We've engineered the whole plan. Uh, all the engineering plans were submitted to the town, but we still lack final approval from the water department, sewer department. Underwood engineers had a comments on the, on our engineering. We have the response to that. We're not obviously here for preliminary. We're here just for sketch and then going to be able to come back in to meet the guidelines that's set forth to go back in for preliminary. So, uh, pump station's been designed. All of that work has already been done. We even paid the town already the fee for the preliminary subdivision application, uh, but we're not quite ready for preliminary. So, we're here just to, to, for formality that this is a sketch plan. We're sticking with the same sixteen lots. We'll be back here and hopefully in the next thirty to forty-five days, uh, completely ready for our preliminary application. And Jason Vafiadi from Atlantic, uh, Resources will be presenting that plan. And that's about all I have to say. If you have any questions?
So, what this is then, is a sketch plan for a sixteen lot cluster concept.
That's right.
A little division that we have in our land use ordinance for clustering.
Right.
And, uh, and you're basing it on that bottom plan, which has, I don't know how many lots, but lots and lots.
Well, that just shows the conventional.
Yeah.
For what you could get.
Yeah, that would be with no engineering.
Yeah, but I don't, I, I need another way out in order to get over two hundred trips.
But the, the number was forty-one.
It was.
Thank you.
Yeah. But we're here with sixteen. On fifteen point five, now, of the thirty-seven acres, this occupies fifteen point five nine acres. If there's going to be a phase two, we have to have a second means of egress out. Okay?
But, how about sidewalks?
You need them on, uh, well, we're required to have them on two sides, Mr. Chairman. And I think that when we commit for preliminary, we might ask, when we talked about waivers, uh, we might ask to have them on one side.
Lighting? Street lighting?
We're open to that discussion, yeah. We're open to that discussion.
Uh, one of the, uh, this, this area, this parcel actually, um, if I remember right, one of the issues was, um, the sewage pumps being one large sewer pump required by the sewer district uh, at each drop in elevation to get the sewer through the low spot, uh, versus individual home pumps in everyone's cellars.
But Paul, we gave up that idea of individual pumps.
You did, alright. So, that's not an open topic.
Yeah, because you know, uh, after listening to you in that, uh, application and how the, the possible failure of those and that the town's required to take those things over, we completely negated that. Uh, eventually, when there's an expansion of this subdivision, there'll be two pump stations. There's one now for the sixteen lots. If we expand to a second phase, there'll be a second pump station.
So, we can clear that hurdle very quickly.
I gave up on that.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Lee Jay, Dan?
I'm Seth. I met with, um, Mr. Hollis earlier today and we went over everything and we're on the same page.
Okay. Alright, thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, members.
Alright, I'd like to open up the second public comment session. It's open to any resident property owner to come forward to talk about anything that relates to the planning board and land use. So, feel free to come forward. Public comment session's open. Yes, sir.
My name is Aman Lee Gold. And, uh, where the plant is now is my property. And the reason they're moving is because I've asked them to move. Um, and we've come to an agreement on how to move forward. Um, as far as this application, I'm in favor of them getting their permits on this property with one caveat, which I'll explain. You ask, uh, AJ, how come we're here this evening when this hasn't been, um, we don't know whether it's allowed or not, uh, the significance of the act of protection. I can tell you why. I walked into the, into the building inspector's office. There was a planner in there and I've been checking periodically and hoping that Northeast was moving forward with their application. And probably, I don't know, a week or two ago, they said that they'd come up an issue. And the issue was that the properties here are in act of protection. And, uh, so, I think the reason they're here is because you as a board missed the act of protection when the project was originally approved. The build inspectors, as they went along. And I never knew that it was in the act of protection. I had no idea. I think it's just something that was overlooked. You're looking at this one project and I think, uh, what you ought to be doing is looking at it from the point of view. Everything around there has been built in the act of protection. A lot of these properties are being leased. And, um, every time someone new comes in with a new use, they're going to have to, um, go through the conditional use project. And just so you have a little bit of background, I'm on the planning board in South Berwick. And I've spoken with the town manager and I said, it makes sense to me that we should, um, have a commercial zone right behind Berwick's commercial zone so that we can, uh, continue on. There's been a lot of good development here and, um, I got some favorable results from speaking with the town manager. There's been no official action taken, but, uh, we're talking about it. The one thing I am concerned about is stormwater management and how this project affects my property. I've got some pitches.
Your property in South Berwick you're talking about?
The property that they're on right now. Yeah, I own that. And how it affects my property. I took a picture the other day, right after the rains. Every time it rains, my property floods out. This was the day after it had rained and it was about a foot higher.
See a copy of that?
You can see a copy. This is my only copy. And, um, I had, I don't know how much history you want. I can give you history if you want. If you just want to make shot, I can make it shot too. So, um, originally, there was, on the mixed side of the property, uh, there was a drainage place. It kind of happened in the sequence where it went into a, a drainage hole. And then it goes out to a pond, which is in South Berwick. Uh, I had spoken with the original owner, who was CM Mick, and told him my concerns. And he, uh, he said, all I need to do is sit tight. He's going to take care of it. And I can tell you by working with CM Mick for years, when he said he's going to do something, he's going to do it. The problem is, we're all subject to death. He died. I went and seen this gentleman over here and asked if we could work together on solving this problem. And he told me that his mom and his dad had done about enough for me. And he was not willing to work together to resolve it, which leaves me with no other option but for you to take a look at the storm management. So that my property doesn't flood out. There's been thousands of yards brought in and it's, has caused my property to have this flooding problem. I think it could be, an engineer could resolve it very easily. But if nobody's willing to address it, it's not going to be addressed. And there's nothing I can do about it if you aren't willing to address it. My property and the Mick property was all one property. A man named Di Mario had owned this. The DEP had given a stop work order. And I brought this property under contract for fifty thousand dollars. I showed CM it. He said he wanted it. And, um, a lot of reclaiming had to be done and I wasn't in a financial position to do it. So, rather than sell it to him, we agreed that I, as a commission, I would get ten acres. And he would get the rest. And with his expertise and all of the equipment, he was able to reclaim it and get that order lifted. But as time has been going on, things have just been blocking the natural flow. The natural flow went towards, um, the pond there, uh, Knight's Pond. And, and now it's, it is what it is. You can see every time it rains, it is in a, a good draining soil. So, a day or two after, the water will subside. I feel that a, uh, one of those ponds, stormwater management ponds, you could put it in and it could be very, uh, easily resolved. And I think if you look back at your old plans and you can see where they, they had a catch basin, uh, they didn't have anything to start with. And they started putting the roads down through. And up until recently, they've been just filling it in. And at some point in time, I will be completely encapsulated. And I guess I could sell something for a swimming hole or something. That, that's not my desire. I think this, this board had ought to, uh, consider that a mistake has been made on these properties. And everyone work together and see if we can't come up with, uh, some things where all of these different buildings can do what they want to do, including having a cement plant. And, um, we just need to be careful about the, uh, about protecting the water. And, and as far as mine and where that cement plant is, I've looked at, uh, that map and where their property, after they get off, it's still going to be my property. And I'm telling you right now, where they're at is not in the act of protection by that map.
It sure is. It sure is by this map, right down right here. Came right from the DEP.
Yeah, well, um, I, the only one I've looked at, Lenny, and I don't want to.
Okay.
And I, I can't comment on something and then, that I haven't seen.
So, what are you asking the board to do?
I'm asking the board to consider, when the other approvals went through it, it specifically said that the drainage would not be blocked off. And there's three lots minus ten left. The road was supposed to be built.
So, you're saying that the development of other lots has affected your lot?
The lot right beside it has accepted, affected the drainage. Every time it rains, um, my lot gets flooded.
So, you're saying that, that, that development of that lot was not built to standard after the applic- after that.
I'm saying that in their submissions, they said that they would not do that.
Sounds like a code enforcement issue. Have you talked to the code enforcement officer?
Well, I, I, I don't, I don't think it is. I think that, um, nothing ought to be approved until they meet.
Stormwater requirements.
The stormwater requirements of the, of the one before it and just straighten it out. This is something that can be solved very easily. And, and I, for the life of me, I don't understand why Billy wasn't willing to work for me, but that's his decision. And, um.
I can answer that.
Sure.
But when, when he's, wait, hold on, hold on. Once he's, once he's done, once he's, I'd just like to ask you to just wrap up your comments because we have other people who want to talk to.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think we ought to all work together here. And, um, unless this mistake that has been made. mistake that has been made, and keeping in mind that, um, a lot of money has been put into these other buildings, and the damage that the mistake is substantial, that we can just change the ordinance a little bit and make this thing work. I, I really, really believe that, and the, they had a road that was all designed with a cul-de-sac. It's never been built. It's my understanding they're gonna develop the back section, which is only going to make my property more underwater, and, uh, I, I don't know what other options I have other than to ask you to consider the stormwater management and the effect of this uncomplete development has on my property.
Absolutely, and that was one of the things that we brought up in the staff report tonight, and that's something that's absolutely gonna get looked at.
Well, thank you very much, and again, I am in favor of them getting...
Yes, sir.
Their cement plant.
Public comment session's still open, sir? If you'd like to come on up to the podium, you get to come up to the podium for our viewers at home, so.
But this is exactly why we wanna move. We're in a mud puddle. We're, we're worried about the aquifer. We wanna get up on high ground, the drains away from the aquifer, for the good of everyone. And this is, he's, he's correct. It is a...
You don't have to prove it, you don't have to prove it to me. I understand why you wanna move. I understand why you wanna move. That, that wasn't the issue tonight with the application.
Okay.
That wasn't the issue. I, I, but I, I, it's Mr. Gove?
Yes.
I do appreciate your comments on that, and that is definitely gonna be looked at. That was something that was already brought up in the staff notes.
If, uh, when you look at that parcel, I mean, that is really with Route Four, the tracks on the other side, it's a prime, and it is our RCI, which happens to have an aquifer protection overlay on it. However, it is what we always look to for an area to develop, um, certain things in Berwick. We've, as far as I'm, I often think I've ever seen a comprehensive plan on the Mick property with all the uses that are on it. And I know something was approved just a few years ago, and I must have been out of town or something, uh, but there was, uh, trees that were supposed to have been planted. There was, you know, a bunch of stuff, which I've never seen anything of that type there.
So I've, I've got some of that background for you. First off, um, I think if there's any stormwater issues or concerns, this did receive a DEP permit, so it ought to probably be a discussion with the DEP regarding whether or not the adequate stormwater is adequate or not. We will be looking at stormwater relevant to this application site if it goes forward, and how it operates, um, and how it should be taking care of the water, relevant to some of the other issues you have, although we can't really do anything about it as part of this approval or this project. Um, you're correct, there was an approval granted in, I wanna say, two thousand six or thereabouts, after the subdivision was approved, that showed the front lot, um, with, um, a lot of landscaping and birmingham and other things that were supposed to be done, which never got done. Um, and there was never any code enforcement follow-up to make sure that they did what they were supposed to do. We're kinda down that road quite far at this point. Um, I'm not sure what the ramifications would be trying to get back and make them do that. Redevelopment of that site or any additional approvals on that particular site, um, we can certainly, um, address that issue.
Yeah, my, my feelings are with, uh, if you look back like it's about twenty, twenty-five years, on top of Cabbage Hill, this is North Berwick, um, one gasoline tank at the top there polluted everyone's wells in a wide, wide area.
Sure.
Just uphill from this, this area here.
Yep.
And I, I think what, I mean, water's important, and we're becoming more and more in tune with that.
Absolutely.
And I really think that we, as a planning board, need to, if we're gonna develop that industrially, uh, we need to make sure that we protect it. And then, I, I would think that I would agree with Mr. Gove that we get together with South Berwickans, because they're the abutters on the east and south side, um, figure out how we can work with them to come up with some kind of a plan that we can go forward in the future, you know, with different maps.
Well, certainly that will be easy if there's a desire to do that, because my executive director acts as the planning staff person for the town of South Berwick. So conversations can be had very easily if both parties choose to do that.
I'd like to keep going with the public comment session. It's open to any resident property owner to come forward. I'll give you another opportunity to come out. I just wanna make sure that nobody else wants to talk first, and then I'll have you come back up. Does anybody else wanna talk for public comment session? I know that you wanted to say something. Anybody else wanna come forward? Okay, yes, sir. You got another, another shot.
The, the only thing I wanna say is Sam did plant trees there. He put a berm all the way across the front. I remember him telling me it cost him a hundred thousand dollars. So he did do it. It may not be there now, but the man did comply with the DEP standards set that time. I, I know I did, 'cause I was lucky with him, I mean.
Are you talking about the berm up front?
Yeah.
I, before I took that out, I asked Joey Wassell if I could take it out. He said, go ahead.
Before you took what out?
There was a berm up front along Route Four.
Did it have trees on it?
It did.
Yeah.
Yeah, it did.
Who, who did you ask?
Simon Falls planted it. We planted like thirty thousand dollars worth of trees up there.
But who did you ask if you could take it out?
Joey Wassell, before I did it. We thought it was all sand, and we needed sand, and we took it out, graded it, left a little hump there and for the drainage, and seeded it just like the other side.
Okay, alright. Anybody else for public comment session before we close out the meeting tonight, if only once?
I'm, I'm not a landowner yet, but can I...
Well, you're an applicant, right?
Yeah.
Well, okay. I mean, we're, we're talking, now we're, we're, we...
No, I just, there's just one little thing. When the planner talks to the town attorney, will we have a, a chance to make sure that the town attorney really knows what we're doing?
Yes.
I would hope so. I plan on articulating to him exactly what you're doing.
Yes.
I probably will reach out to him as well, email him as well.
Well, we're still talking, we're, we're going back into talking about the application. We shouldn't be doing that right now, because we moved on from that. If you have, if, sir, if you have a comment, if you could just come to the podium, just state your name and address.
Yeah. Bill Toby, I live on, uh, San Joe, South Park. Comment to this?
Sure, yeah, okay.
Comment to Manley.
Can you just go to the podium?
Sure, well, I wanted to show it to you. You can see this is all, it's been over dug. Let me see here. And they dug a ditch right here. I don't know if you can see it. But where they, they dumped it out onto our property down here. Not right on our property, it's about fifty yards from our property. He came to my house one day, wanted to know if I'd worked with him. And wanted to dig a, put a pipe in all the way across my property, across the road in, uh, into that pond. And all I said is, no, I can't do that right now. I've already hired ATA, given them ten grand a year ago to, to start developing that and doing something with it. It's all, I mean, I, I just don't like people coming up here and saying lies, you know, saying I won't help them. I'd help anybody.
Okay.
I'm helping Lenny, I'll help anybody. But don't, you know, and he's dumping that water on my property now because he over dug his property.
Dan, could you review this plan? And could you make a trip out there? Have you already done that?
I have.
Okay.
There's a difficulty in determining what the elevations were at the time of approval to the time of where elevations are at this time. There's been, uh, material brought in, there's been berms created. I don't think we're capable in my office to determine, and I think this is probably a soil engineer who's gonna have to go out and reestablish what the elevations are.
But there was clearly defined requirements for the sub, for this subdivision when it went in, in terms of drainage, stormwater, uh, landscaping. Have those been met?
I haven't looked at it in that sense, I bet I can't.
So, I mean, that's what we have to do.
We, we need to research the original subdivision approvals.
Research the original thing and bring it back up to when it was at approval.
Correct, correct.
Not make what's there now worse.
Well, no, absolutely not.
We have, yeah.
I mean, there was a, as, as, as part of the plan that you have, really going down a road that we shouldn't be, but it's part of the plan that you have in regards to their operation that they're proposing, you'll see that there's a fairly significant, um, grading and drainage area that goes down to the South Berwick town line. That was part of the original subdivision plan, and that should have been constructed. If it hasn't, that's an issue.
Okay.
Um, and it's supposed to be some underdrain in that area, carrying water to that, to that area as well. I haven't, I've looked at it. I haven't studied it a lot, because I've been dealing with this initial issue regarding, you know, definitions.
Let's tackle the first thing first. And I think that we've, we're beating a dead horse right now on this. And I think that we're really talking out of order when it comes to this application right now. I know we have two different problems that we have to fix. The first big one is what we talked about.
Can we even do the, can they even do the use?
Exactly. And then, regardless whether or not that's yes or no, we still have to look at this other issue.
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else for public comment session? Seeing nobody come forward post the public comment session? Any informational items from the board? Seeing none? Uh, next on the agenda is the adjournment.
I move to adjourn the, um, Thursday, December sixth, planning board meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?